A C-3, it goes from eighty to seventy. For residential area, you can't drop, you can't drop twenty. You're going to check the point of this complaint?
We tried, we've tried to hear this according to zoning.
That's why I asked you where you were going to check.
Because I agree totally with what you're saying. You're going to have some residential areas which border commercial or industrial zones that you can't expect the sound level to be as hot, as low as those farther away.
I guess what I'm saying is if a person's like right here in an R1A and the noise is coming here a half a block away in a C-3, the C-3 should drop ten points, but yet if we, if we answer the complaint here, it's got to drop twenty.
Well, it's going to be the point of complaint.
Right, so that's going to mean when you cross that boundary, it's going to drop twenty.
In fact, in fact, we made a point here of correcting some, a big deficiency in some earlier ordinances where they said it was at the receiving land use property line, and sometime that's very inaccurate. So, and it's unfair to the people who are generating the noise because it really doesn't show what the people are hearing. So, we've gone to the stipulation that it would be measured three feet from the noise sensitive receptor, which means if somebody's complaining about noise at their bedroom window, it's measured approximately three feet from that bedroom window.
And that's precisely where we're getting some of the [inaudible].
Which makes all the sense in the world.
We have a question out here.
Can I ask the experts, what are the sounds on noise? And I'm reading. An example, on Saturday afternoon, I was home, I could hear probably three miles away the EPA system from Recreation Park for the football game. Now, if I object to that, are you going to go cancel the football game or shut them down? I mean, I think these are some of the things you have to think about. I might just address the weather situation because on a normal day, I probably, I could not hear anything from Recreation Park. But, the way that the wind was blowing, maybe the atmosphere or the conditions of the weather made it that it was almost like the football game was on my back, my back lawn. I think, and I read through this, and I didn't see anything that had brought the weather conditions.
No, I agree with many, many ordinances that you will see that.
As a matter of fact, then you haven't crossed.
No, we haven't.
Then should you have crossed?
Is it an exception to a normal condition?
Well, I don't know.
I personally don't think we can, I, yes, what happens if the wind's blowing a certain way, or if we're in a temperature inversion, it changes the propagation pattern of noise considerably. Does it happen on a regular basis? No, it happens rather infrequently. I don't think we can, we can write something like this to address every minute condition that could exist.
I'm very lucky.
I, I think your example's very good, and I appreciate where you're coming from, but it still is an exception, it's unusual occurrence.
It is one of the exceptions created by sporting events, or any other segment that can be exempt between the hours of nine.
What are you talking about is the science of how the noise property?
Well, I just use that example, sure, what about, what about an industry? Okay, you could go backwards, and Brian, Alderman Ryan is getting to that. And there's a fellow here from Seal Right, and I know that from what I know, that you've had some complaints about Seal Right, which are ongoing situation. We've changed Aldermen's up there now, and we have a new Alderman that's been going on for the past four years from the previous Alderman. What about the weather conditions from an industry? And I think Ryan's trying to make that point, in that in the daytime, you've got one decimal reading, in the nighttime, you've got another decimal reading, but yet, he's not going to shut his machine down just to get a reduced decimal reading, or, you know.
But relating it to what you said, I think we have to have a performance criteria based upon normal conditions. And normal conditions exist about ninety-nine percent of the time.
Not around here.
Okay.
What do you think? I understand.
Well, yes, people.
Well, I have a series of questions, and all this, I don't want to speak out of turn, and all this type of talk is fine. And, I mean, the people who put the sorrows together did a tremendous job, very good, very technical. But I guess my first question should be, would be, do we really have a problem? I mean, I know from time to time, you have isolated people, isolated complaints, but overall, do we really have a problem? I mean, I've lived in the city my whole life, and I've never been affected by the noise. Once in a while is a problem, but I mean, on a daily basis, is it really a problem?
Let me, let me just.
I'm addressing these people.
Oh, okay.
You know, I understand where you're coming from. From a technical standpoint, I have no complaint about the ordinance, but it's, but I also think we have to remember where we live. I mean, we're living in Fulton, a very small area, grid, what do people conduct into the city? And the city was built by industry, you know, and industry was put here, and the grounds of the neighborhood are built around the industry. If you look at the history of Fulton and how the city was developed, that's really what was done. And we just can't tell these industries to leak, and we can't just tell them to be fine because people maybe are more sensitive now that we're in the past. I just, I just think we have to be very careful about what we're doing. I also would have a question as to whether or not, all the industries have now been notified about this, in some form or, I mean, I agree about this being designed on the board of directors of the Chamber of Commerce.
I mentioned it to my boss, that he's an environmental engineer, he didn't know about it, but he said that he would like a copy of it because the plant manager would like to know. And we have concerns with reefers on our trucks because we have a big fleet of trucks, and they have refrigeration units on that come on, off, and on automatically, and they generate noise.
Jerry, that question arose before, we intend to, we intend to have a public hearing on this, second meeting October. And the question came up, well, do we do anything more than a normal notice? But then the question becomes, well, where do you draw the line? Do you send it to everybody in the Chamber of Commerce? Do you send it to every industry that you think you remember in your head, but then you might forget one? I mean, it's a very difficult question.
I understand that, but I would think before you want to have a public hearing, you want to get as much as.
I agree with you.
Ron, as Ron said last year, this came up every year when I was city attorney. Every year, somebody would file a complaint, and I probably drew four of these noise ordinance. And you run into the same problem, and it's.
If we notify Seal Right, Black Claws, and, but we forget Pathfinder, I mean, it's very tough to.
Hey, you got a lot of small shops that may be.
Well, I just all shop. There's going to be more on that.
Yeah.
Because they're in the residential areas. So, it's a big problem, and I don't know the answer.
Well, yeah, the answer is that, no, if you don't have a public hearing, you, you know, leak things the way, the way it is, because it's really affecting.
A problem forever, and you said you've directed how many of these before while you were city attorney? Then isn't it obvious that we need something? If there are that many noise complaints over time?
I mean, what I've said was that every year, there'd be isolated complaints. And then, as a good Alderman, do, they want to try to address the complaints from their constituents, but.
I've been around for about nine months, I guess my question to you, because you've been involved politically for quite a while, would it be fair to say the isolated complaints were from the same problems? And could those, say, two individual problems be addressed separately as opposed to a noise ordinance?
I never heard of Seal Right being a problem until a month ago. Never, never heard of Seal Right being a problem. There was never any.
Not a problem for me either, so.
No, I mean, there were complaints, but mostly with.
Well, the basement was quality and, and, which apparently stopped. The scrap metal places apparently not going to be a problem much longer.
I mean, my first question, is there really a problem? And my point with bringing in the industries on an informal basis, or a workshop-like basis, was maybe to find out if they feel there's a problem. You know, business people are responsible, they, they do have responsibilities, they do have a lot of employees, and they want to be good citizens too. And maybe get some input from them as to what they feel the problem is, what they feel they can do about it if there is a problem.
Jerry, if I could interrupt you, please. Maybe going through the Aldermen here, I would say, in the second word, there would probably just be two major problems. One would be the train, and the other one would be whatever's going on down at Recreation Park. You know, I had calls where the bands were too loud, a woman calling me saying the house was shaking. These would be the only two that I would have in my word.
Neither of those covered by this ordinance.
No. I had the same thing with the Jazz Fest, people said they could hear, you know.
Oh, a Jazz Fest, you can permit out of this too, so.
They still complain?
I don't have any problems.
Well, we're trying to address ones, we have some up there. Well, we have one person has complained, and we went over, and you can't hear it. If you're by the factory, you can't hear it. When you get by this individual's house, you can hear it. And they're looking into buying some mufflers for the equipment, you know, you know. But if we put them on, and that's not enough, then what do we do?
Well, one of the reasons, if I could interject here, one of the reasons that you write an ordinance, and you put objective measurements on, is so that the people who are doing the noise reduction know what they have to achieve. It's that simple. It's really more to the benefit of the people who are trying to reduce their noise, because then they know just what they have to achieve. And it gives something objective.
Is there, can you rent this equipment and have it reliable, or are there outfits that will come in and do testing for you?
Sure.
You know, I mean, I don't know how expensive it is, but, but I'd like to see, you know, there's two different things here with the noise. I mean, my biggest complaint I've ever had with noise is, like I said, hold parties and things like that, things that keep working people up at night, that are, I consider unnecessary noises after ten, eleven o'clock at night. But, these decimal things are hard for me, I mean, unless you get a noise and say, that's eighty, Ron, and this is sixty, I don't know what the heck you're talking about.
Well, that's the dual chart of the.
Yeah, I know, but that, I gotta hear it, you know, I'm like from Missouri now, I gotta say it, I gotta hear it, but I'd like to have some time so we could do some testing and find out just where we are before we.
Well, we did a little bit. I mean, it was, it was a little bit done early in the game, looking at the, at what possible sources there were out there. We identified two or, well, three or four different things.
Do background noises?
Beyond events, but nothing, nothing far out, nothing tremendously far away from the levels that have been established here.
Do background noises make a difference, like during the day, and you got all the traffic, do they absorb some of this noise?
No.
Or do people just don't pay attention as much because they're not trying to sleep?
They don't pay attention as much when they're not trying to sleep. It raises the ambient, yes.
Yeah.
The things that you notice are the things that are, that stand out, that poke out above the ambient.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, if it's quiet and you hear the faucet dripping, it'll drive you nuts, but, but some of this noise is not going to go away, it's just going to be a little quieter.
Well, that's the.
Well, I'm not sure that if, if repetitive noises.
Just the difference, you stay in one place during the day, and a tractor trailer goes through, and you don't hear that much.
Right.
Because there's other background noises. But at night, when it's quiet, and you start going through gears, it's definitely different.
Yeah, I know. When, you said you did some testing early on, when was that?
That was last, yeah, November, yeah.
So, it was right after that, you started testing.
Again, Dan, I mean, I always wanted something to try to cover that end of it because they drive people nuts, you know.
I spent about two weeks after that testing, in day and night, in the various zones. That's why this got broken up into zones, we found that the zones were really important, because there's character of the zone, you know. And certainly, R1 is going to have less noise even than an R2, you know.
Yeah. If you move in next to a factory, you gotta expect it's going to make some noise.
You're going to expect a super noise, but that's why these constantly go up, and that's what we did. We looked at the standard, and we went out and tested, and we said, gee, you know, we're not that different than anybody else, you know.
I noticed on forty-one, they build the wood barriers to try to, you ever notice that along some of the super highways where they put?
Yeah, the residential areas.
Yeah, they put barriers in there, but it looks like an expensive venture to me.
Jerry, did you have any more? You said you had a few.
No, I just think we need, just to sort of process.
Oh, yes. Steve?
In answer to the gentleman's question, that he asked about all the issues to affect the sound levels, they, wind direction, air density, acoustical, naturally occurring acoustical absorption, trees, as a, for instance, buildings, they can also be reflectors of sound. I'm not quite as credentialed as Mr. Andrews, but I do have a couple.
Steve, looking at these noise levels, they're decimal levels, you've done some testing around Seal Right?
Yes.
Has the noise been within these limits?
Very close, within these limits. And Mr. Andrews and I discussed this before too. They had been very close, and I think Mr. Catwara was present on one evening when I did some testing.
And that's taking the readings just outside the plant?
Yes.
And the farther you get from the plant?
Hi, that's what I was wondering.
Typically, typically, noise will drop off in a very, very hard environment, we just. It'll drop off around six decibels every time you go over this. This is by noise.
Or river.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Well, I think to address Jerry's concerns about the intention of the council, certainly, we realize the dependence we have on industry, and we encourage as much industry as possible. We've made arrangements for, through, through many more people than just, at every level, and Burns is familiar with what happened to the Seal Right expansion and what's going to continue to happen. So, the council in no way whatsoever wants to put a damper on what industry does. I think what we are concerned with is having some kind of a guideline that we can use to address whatever concerns that might come up dealing with noise. And I think Chief Spawn has done an excellent job, and Dan Vaughn has done an excellent job, and of course, Bob Andres is a, is a specialist. So, I think it addresses a lot of different concerns. I don't think we have to, I think there's flexibility in there, I don't think we're intending to make it something that's completely unreasonable. So, I think it's a, I think it's a start. I think it's, when you look in the charter and you see about, you see one paragraph in there, I think that needs to be broadened.
Yeah, I think that, I think all of us have had problems with noise of some kind or another. I'd just like some time to look at some of the industry and look at what is zone right next to them, where some of the complaints might be generated, because some industries are going to be set to a lower standard probably than others because of where the residential areas border them. They're not going to drop ten, they're going to drop twenty.
Would we have to check almost every manufacturing process in order to get an idea?
I think we ought to take a good look at the zoning maps and see what we got, because I was going to ask him. Now, you drop, I mean, you probably was using the lower end that you would have in this ordinance, but if you were right next to an R1A or an R2, and you had to go down twice that, would you, would you still meet it? Because you said you were close. Oh, okay, for the residential area in that, okay, all right.
And for the manufacturing, we were relatively close, there's within five decibels.
Okay. Because some places got residential areas right next to them, they're bordering, you know what I'm saying?
So, I don't think, it sounds like that this has been very closely, you know, the work that you've done on this has been very exact and close to, if Steve is giving us the figures that, that he's very close right now, then I think that that's certainly encouraging that we're okay with it, you know.
Do we have draft copies made up yet in the clerk's office for the public to get, or?
Over here.
Okay, so people can pick them up now?
Sure.
Okay, that's, that's the whole thing.
Yes, I think if we, if we can get the information out to the public properly, we haven't got a, what, a public hearing is scheduled and when?
There is, there is no public hearing scheduled yet, so.
Okay, that's what I mean.
We need more time for investigation, we have.
Okay.
I wanted to add that when you're, the Aldermen are considering this, you, I wanted you all to know that the enforcement, especially from my end, isn't just a simple, normal trial of somebody testifying, well, this is where I ran the machine. It'd be more like a DWI-type trial, where you'd have issues of calibration of the machine and the repairs of the machine, and that can get quite extensive and expensive, and just you should be aware of that. I mean, that's, anybody that's charged under this objective standard is going to have the right to all kinds of discovery regarding the machine that was used. And it means significant training for the people using it.
I'd like a cost breakdown in the schooling and the equipment too, and how often does it have to be calibrated?
Okay, typically, I guess I'll use the Newcastle Police down in Westchester, they're probably the most restrictive ordinance that I've seen. They, they have their units, their meters, they have three of them, I think. They have them calibrated by the factory once a year, and, and of course, you have a calibrator that comes with the instrument, and that's used to check your calibration before you, you take readings. This is not a difficult thing. You take the meter, you turn it on, you put the calibrator over the meter, you adjust the meter so it reads a certain thing, and, and, and.
Well, it's covered in the training. Calibrating a breathalyzer, but have you ever seen a trial on a breathalyzer? It's not a simple affair. I mean, defense attorneys pick that stuff apart because of, number one, majority of people that calibrate these type instruments, whether it's a decimal meter or a breathalyzer, they can tell you, well, I pushed this button, I did this, I did this. And then when you ask them, well, what does this thing measure? Decibels, what is that? Well, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, I've seen that in action many times, I mean, it's, it's a very serious concern.
It would be, I guess, under the, under the direction I've been given, it would be my responsibility to make sure that the people that are doing this know what they're doing.
But again, it's, there's difference between knowing how to push the right button and knowing why you're doing it.
Sure.
I've seen that, I mean, anytime you have a scientific instrument, tally, whether it's a breathalyzer, decimal meter, or even a speed or radar gun, there are these attacks that can be made, and I just think everybody should be aware of that.
Bob, excuse me, what's the past history on this as far as Camillus's experience with this, with the same, it's the same type of noise awareness that they have?
Yeah, yeah. It's the same.
How long have, how long have they had it?
Since ninety-one. And I know I've received three or four calls asking for interpretation, and a couple where they've asked me to come down and check their levels to see if they were in compliance, and, and that's it.
So, other than that, they haven't had any complaints as far as?
Not that I'm aware.
As far as enforcement, I don't, I think that's a concern also, you know.
Enforcement, it pretty well is, it's accepted that the compliance officer is trained on how to use the calibrator, how to use the instrument, how to measure sound, how to hold it, because it is, one of the things that's important is that you, you don't hold it up next to your body because you're going to get reflections from the body, and that could change the, the, the sound that you're reading, and you should hold it a certain way, and you read it. And this ordinance is written as a shall not exceed, so there's going to be a peak hold, so the instrument will look up and it'll hold the maximum level that it sees. And I was talking about this with Mark, pretty much, they, they, they would, just like anything, they would allow a little slush in there, so that it would make sure, if we're looking at a seventy-five level, he isn't going to pay it right at seventy-five and say, oh, they went to seventy-five point two. You don't do that anyway, if it is a matter of practice. But, the instrument has to meet ANSI specifications, the calibrator has to meet ANSI specifications, and if it's calibrated at the factory once a year, it is traceable to the National Bureau of Standards, they changed the name of it to something else, but, but that is, that's good, solid evidence in court. I have never seen, if, when this is done, I've never seen it challenged, as long as we can provide documented evidence of training.
Okay, and the chief certainly has worked a lot on this with you and Dan Vaughn, and he is comfortable with the parameters? With the enforcement?
With the enforcement provisions you asked about, the, as far as DB levels, again, as I said, I don't have any experience with DB levels at all, and I rely on Bob's information on the DB levels that are set here, which you mentioned are in parallel with EPA.
They're actually a little bit higher, but EPA would rather.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their input on this issue. It sounds like we need some more research. You asked for some costs.
Yeah, I want to know, I want to know the training cost, and I want to know what the equipment costs.
And we need to, need to check some decimal levels outside of our manufacturing plants in various areas of the city.
Yep.
Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion, please. I know it's been very difficult to try to contact every industry or every small industry or business here in the city. I see Steve Robinson is the only representative here from Seal Right. Is there a way that we can make a, a public invitation in the paper plus the public service TV? So, this way.
Meeting notes was in the, in the paper.
But I mean, just a, just a special invitation to industry and small business.
Joe, is there something we do?
Can we do that, Joe?
When we have the public hearing? All right. But we won't schedule the public hearing until we get the results of the further investigation back.
Thank you. Mr. Woodward, we, Mr. Vaughn advised me that there's been $2,000 appropriated for instrumentation and training, that'll be it, that'll be the maximum.
You say it's already been budgeted last year?
Yep.
Last year? It hasn't been spent?
No, we're, we're, we're just, we're just first aid, which is training instrumentation, and the $2,000 is already allocated. Yeah, $2,000 is already allocated for that.
How much was spent on the first?
Two thousand.
I'll respect.
Yeah, we've been working on this for almost a year now.
Oh, yes. Understand.
Another question out there?
You have another question?
I'm just felt in Seal Right.
Yes.
We're, we're in the process of doing, myself and another gentleman from an outside source, we're in the process of spending some more time and some more money in doing research, not only around their facility, but in the surrounding area, considerably more than a couple thousand dollars. In answer to your question, the equipment can run from a hundred dollars to several thousand depending on what you want to accomplish, and technically, the core end that you want to get. So, we are doing.
Thank you very much, Steve. We'll take a five-minute break before the council meeting starts.
Lord, please bestow your grace and blessings, and I would like to share with all of you some statement that I did find. We can choose to throw stones, to stumble on them, to climb over them, or to build with them. Lord, please show us your guiding light. Amen.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahaski?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Sherman?
Here.
Alderman Woodward?
Here.
Our president, your honor.
Item one.
Resolved that the minutes of September first, nineteen ninety-eight, common council meeting are hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Where's the meeting of the council held on September first? The council authorized clerk to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Wednesday, September sixteenth, nineteen ninety-eight, seven p.m., relative to a proposed local law which would change the term of the mayor from two years to four years. Mayor Stafford will declare this public hearing open.
This subject has, has come up before. I supported it then as a department head in the city, and.
I supported it then as a department head in the city, and now that I've been in this office for over eight months, I can see that it is necessary for, to help the continuity of the government in the city, and to allow a mayor to do some long-term planning. It's impossible to plan for anything more than two years at the present time. And we have some projects that are going to take much longer than two years. So I definitely am in favor of this at this time, and I see that we have some of our former mayors here that I hope agree with me on this. Public hearing is open. Honorable George Flat.
I certainly hardly endorse the idea of more year terms as mayor, and I echo your remarks. I know one problem a lot of people have with this is that they want to have the opportunity after two years, if they feel mayor hasn't done a good job, to kick him out. Well, it's a double-edged sword, you see? Because you don't have enough time to plan in a two-years' time to accomplish anything and prove that you can do a good job in two years. So the result is, you haven't done a good job, and so people say, well, we don't need him, let's try something else. And that's the inherent problem with two-year term. A mayor, especially a new mayor, has most of the first year to try to get settled into the job and find out what the problems are, how to solve them, and so on. And then the second year he spends trying to get reelected. I don't think the average person realizes what a mayor is up against to begin with. And aside from his duties as mayor, you know, he's still a husband, probably a father, with relatives. And by the time he gets through with his day at work, holding the necessary meetings, going through the mail, which is always a job I really hated, both my own business as well as mayor, and dictating a reply or answer, or doing research on whatever project the mail raises, new or used or outstanding, and then he's going to turn around and he'll hope he can answer the telephone calls that came in the day before, while he's busy opening and reading and trying to answer the mail. And after he gets through with that, handles the complaints that have come to his office, his secretary will want some time with him about some other problems. Then he gets through those, hopefully before lunch, and if not, he'll break for lunch, if he's lucky. Or he'll have it brought in, maybe he'll get something from the sub shot. Then he'll come back to work, and then he'll start tackling some of the old work. And this can be very, very time-consuming, believe me. So all of a sudden, it's five o'clock, and his wife expects him home for dinner. He's lucky he'll make it by seven or eight, and at other times, much later than that. And then he'll come back and perhaps work again in the evening. And then there are other things, you know, political commitments, and then meetings of different kinds with different organizations, or some kind of celebration. And of course, don't forget the holidays. He has to observe all the holidays, just like any other person does. So all of a sudden, somebody says to him, probably the chairman of the committee, City Committee, we have, you know, a primary coming up in September, and this is June. And then the scramble begins. So there you are, in very brief description of something of what a mayor is involved in.
I found it to be quite accurate. It hasn't changed since you were there.
I would be willing to bet, probably a gold twenty-dollar piece, that it's a lot more complicated, as a matter of fact. Because that's another thing that's happened to the office of mayor as well as the councilman. It's gotten infinitely more complex than it did the year nineteen eighty when this city was incorporated, and I don't think a lot of people are aware. I hope that it passes.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I've written mine because I have senior moments. There was a time when the business of the city could be taken care of over the lunch hour, when the location of the underground valve were in the personal memory of the water commissioner. It made life difficult if he died. We all know that times have changed dramatically, and particularly so in the area of government. The business of the community is complicated and time-consuming. It is increasingly difficult to get qualified candidates and eligible candidates for posts such as the mayor if they have important and demanding jobs in the private sector. We have made progress with the provision for assistance to the administrative position. But with a two-year term, we are in reality asking the mayor to start running for office again, little more than a year after his camp, or her, campaign for election. Today, it means raising money, working on a campaign, and ideally, going door-to-door, which requires considerable time besides the duties of running the city. A two-year term with no guarantee of reelection means that the mayor may initiate change but have little or no role in implementation. Two years is not long enough to initiate dramatic change and see it through. All of us who have served the city, and pretty much all here tonight as mayors, have given considerable attention to the four-year term provision. We have been nonpartisan, which is refreshing in modern history elsewhere, and agreed through our presence this evening in asking this common council to provide for a referendum. We know how devoted we all had to be to this important post in our administrations, and want the mayors of the future to be able to devote their energies as far as possible to the work of the city and not the mechanics of running for the office. We also want the best eligible candidates possible in both parties, so that the best interests of the city will be served. A four-year term will help considerably. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would anyone else? Want to speak on this? Yes, ma'am.
I noticed there's an executive assistant now instead of an administrator. Does that mean it's the same that the administrator used to do?
Yes.
Well, when they didn't want a four-year mayor, they had, they decided they needed an administrator. Does that mean now that with a four-year term, you won't need the administrator?
No, the administrator was brought on and to take care of the increase in the work that comes through the office. I can tell you at this point in time, the mayor's position is a part-time position, supposedly. And I have found it to be anything but. And I'm not complaining about that, because I campaigned for this. But I am busy all the time. My executive assistant is busy all the time. There are so many projects going on and so much to do that is definitely required. This is only going to increase the term of the mayor. That's all it would do. Instead of having the mayor reelected every two years, it would change it to every four years. That's all it's going to do. It doesn't change anything else.
Apparently, it didn't work when they voted last time. I was at the meeting, in fact, many meetings, when they couldn't solve what they, and it's understandable, because I know two years is not enough, especially when you have to pollute after it's over with. The executive, or not the executive, but the administrator, was supposed to put in a big deal, because this was a paid person staying, and the job is permanent.
Yes.
My argument at the time was it wouldn't be permanent, it would change with administrative changes.
Well, it does. It's not, it's not permanent. The executive assistant to the mayor serves at the pleasure of the mayor. Okay. So that just, as I said, that just is for the increased workload. I think what they talked of at one time was making the mayor's position full-time. And instead of doing that, that would rule out a number of people from running for mayor. That's why they brought in the city administrator. It was for that reason.
May I say something?
Sir?
I served on that committee with the former mayors that are here tonight. And I, when I was mayor, I worked a full-time job as well. And that was one reason that we felt that a city administrator, or an assistant, whatever you want to call it, would not only be beneficial to the mayor, but it would be, it would give the public a chance to pick from a bigger pool of possible candidates for mayor. A person like me, I would never consider trying to run for mayor again unless I had help. Okay? If I had, if I was retired or something like that, I could do it. But, you know, you see what I'm saying? It opened up more candidates and more people that could, could try to do the job.
Could I respond to that?
Sure.
If the administrator happens to be very good, why should he leave when the mayor goes out? Why shouldn't he stay in?
He doesn't, he doesn't have to leave. It's up to the new mayor to appoint who he thinks would do the best job.
Well, in politics, we know that when the one goes out, the other one has a better one to go and fill in. We all know that.
I'd like to add, too, and...
The man is good in the job.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're off the subject.
No, not really. Because I want to get back to some...
You know, back in nineteen ninety, Mayor Allerton appointed the former, former mayors to go through a litany of different ideas to come up with, to, and one of the ideas was, is to increase the term of mayor from two years to four years. Another one was to have an administrative assistant, executive assistant. We also made other recommendations, such as have an assistant city attorney, such as increasing the common council's pay, remuneration, to be conglomerate with the county legislators. We also, I think, came up with a proposal to have a, another secretary for the mayor's office. So, I mean, we had made different recommendations. This went on the ballot in nineteen ninety, and was the feature. You're right, it was the feature. Also, at that point, if you remember, in that, in that period of time, the county also came up with a proposal, was on the same ballot, to increase the term of the legislator from two to four years. I think a lot of people got confused and really, well, maybe one was good and one wasn't, the other one wasn't good, or maybe they were both bad at the same time. I'm really not sure. I think it's really time, I think that, you know, with the people that don't see the forest, the way out of the forest, really have to wake up and say, this is a big-time job. We all realize it. We have six mayors here, six former mayors here, out of sight. And the other mayor, Mayor Bullard, could not be here tonight. And we absolutely support the referendum, at least put in a referendum up to the public to vote on a four-year mayor's term. Thank you very much.
Mr. Trump? Mr. Flat?
Your Honor, I think the response to Alice's concerns about the four-year term is, the mayor is the chief executive, and he sets the policy and the long-term planning, or at least that is what he tries to do. And it's impossible to do that in two years. You're trying to do any long-term planning, and all of a sudden, as I said before, you're up for reelection, you're running for reelection, the long-term planning, and this happened to me, as a matter of fact, on this waterfront thing. I had a committee going on that and running, and with some assistance from the state on it. And bingo, it fell by the wayside, and of course, thank God it's been revived. But that's what happens to long-term planning when the mayor attempts to set an agenda, something that's going to bear some fruit. In two years, he doesn't see that happen. In four years, he has a much better chance of seeing that happen, of implementing it, of getting behind it, and see if it's done. You can't do that in two years. There's got to be a reason why the mayor of the city of Syracuse is four years, the governor of the state of New York is four years, the president of the United States is four years, and it all seems to be working out pretty good. Certainly is no problem, at least to give it a shot here. If the people of the city don't think it's working, they can always reverse that in the future. But I think it's very important that it be tried at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not against four years. I'm for four years. It's just my questions are about the administrative work. If we have a good administrator, why can't we keep him? That's the only thing. Now, if Mr. Pruck turns out to be marvelous for the city, why does he have to leave?
That isn't the problem. That isn't what the question is, yet.
Yeah, but it is...
Why didn't you raise it in another meeting?
No, it will come up in the day. That's why we have the, when you lost the four years, because of the administrative factors.
He says, go to the mic so you can hear, everybody can hear me. Nineteen sixty-five, I ran for first time for mayor. I was hit with a blizzard in sixty-six. I think you all remember that. I told that all of us. I ran for office eight times, was elected himself. That's fourteen years. That's nearly all the time of mass parents have served. I want to go on record right now for the four-year term I've taken serve in the city of Easton. Thank you. Someone in the back.
Another mayor.
First time I've said anything in a long while. I can't think of anything new. I think it's a good time to have a four-year term.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Fanteke?
Dave Fanteke, Vice Chairman of the Fulton City. The Republican Committee, and I was asked to speak today, just to tell the bulletins on as far as working side. Past two administrations, first one had a complete wipeout of the council, and this last term of administrations, half the council was wiped out. I include the city administrator left, the secretary left, so that when the new mayor came in, it also happened. When Don Bullard came in, the secretary wasn't there, council wasn't there, there was no way for anybody to pick up the threads and ask somebody when they came in, how does this, what happens? What do we do? So everybody just learns, it's like a baptism of fire, first year, and the way we have it set up every two years. So by the time a mayor, any mayor, finally realizes what's going on, it's probably like three quarters of the way through his administration, where he earns the respect of the people that he, that work for the department heads. And that's an important thing. A mayor cannot administer unless he has the respect of the people that work for him. It takes time to build respect. You just don't get it. In that matter, the Fulton City Republican Committee endorses a four-year term, so that the who's ever mayor learns how to operate the city, so that after a while, in the last two years, he really, or she, really knows how to operate the city, and has respect of the people that work for us, and can accomplish some of the goals that he sets out and what he campaigned on. I'd also like to say, we're not in favor of a four-year term for Alderman, because we feel that if somewhere down the line, the people have a problem with the mayor, within a two-year term, then they can adjust that by reelected Alderman, and then more in favor of what they feel for the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here, I pull out a sheet as a bipartisan. If the mayor is in his office, if the mayor, excuse me, if the mayor's employed four hours a day, I'm against a four-year term. I'm for the two-year conservative, conservative speaking, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
You've been coming for a lot of meetings. I think they're not every one of these ex-mayors. We've been coming a long time. I do know one thing, there's a lot of these that have come, I think you were one of them, very few meetings that you came before you ran for mayor. So there's a lot of you who didn't know how all this went. You might have come to a meeting for a complaint, or maybe a public hearing on something. But I know if I was supposed to be running for mayor, I would have known what I was getting into, because I've been in on an awful lot of just what we hear here, not even what we hear in offices. And I would figure, boy, this is going to be one heck of a job.
It is.
So if you didn't know this, if you weren't coming to all these things, you wouldn't have known what you were getting into until the time came. A two-year is, would be sufficient if you knew what you were getting into, but I can understand why a four-year can run a little bit longer if you've got something going. understand why a four-year can run a little bit longer if you've got something going. If we're stuck with one that we don't like, we're going to be stuck for four years. But if he's doing a good job, hey. But have more people come and sitting over here to keep track of what's going on up here, and maybe they don't have to just watch television, they can come and say something if they believe or don't like what's going on. Because I think a lot of times, that's what we're failing in, is there's a lot of things that we don't care for. I know we have aldermen that we can call in and do our complaints to. Two years are good. If they aren't any good, four years is better if they're a good mayor. And as far as administrators helping out, we know they come and go with the mayor, so we can't talk about that tonight.
Thank you. Let's not confuse the issue. Is there anyone else? Anyone on the council?
I think it's my fault because of my voice, and I don't have that angry voice on all tissues that much. And I like the looking guy when I'm talking to him. I appreciate all our past mayors. I agree with every single thing they've said. But I want to give it a view from the citizen or the voter's point. People call in the house and talk to people on the street, ask them questions, and I'm getting different types of answers. So what I want to do is bring you what I think the public feels, good or bad. Sometimes the truth hurts, but if you want to educate the voter, you have to lay out the truth. I agree that the city of Fulton is no longer the same city we had 50 years ago. We used to have a dairyman come in, have milk in the cows and run the city part-time. We had a very good mayor who ran and was re-elected seven times. That tells me that if you're doing your job, you can be re-elected. And he was a Democrat in a Republican city. Mr. Bullard, best mayor, was also a Democrat. He had two terms. He was re-elected. So you can be re-elected, whether you're out campaigning in two years or four years, it makes no difference. We as the voter know what we want. We voted you in office. We want you to do the things that you promised us that you were going to do when you took office. If you're doing those things that you had promised us and things that we want, we will re-elect you. If you're doing your job, that's the best game for you. Now, the city of Fulton has involved into an $11 million a year budget operation. We have a part-time CPO working for $288 a week. $15,000 a year, running $11 million operation. He can't do it. We realize that, that's why we brought in the BA. BA is doing an excellent job. At the time, I gotta admit, I said one or the other, we don't need both. Now I find out that he's working full-time and so is the mayor working full-time. I think it's insulting, not to demean the secretary, but the mayor's secretary is making $5,000 more than the mayor is. There's something wrong there. Now, I talk to the people and they say, I only want two years because if we get a bum in there, I want to get him out. It's the same guy that's sitting home there at a television election night with a can of beer, is going to have the faintest idea what's going on. All I know is, we've got people like Kennedy and Henry Hyde and Al Inspector and God knows, strong term, and they got to lean them against the chair so you don't fall over. These guys have been in there for 30 years with no restrictions. We have no control over Congress or the Senate. So what we're saying is, we want to keep the control we've got here in Fulton. We want to be able to get the guy out. Two years. I agree with the four-year term. Let me say that first. You say that it takes a whole year to learn what's going on. It's true. You may have to clean up the mess left behind the last administration. You may have to look on their desks for time bombs that might have been set. It takes a whole year to clean it up, to get it where you want it, like any job. Takes a whole year to learn the job and learn the ropes. Second year rolls around, you got to start campaigning. I don't believe that part of it. You do your job, I'll re-elect you. But two years isn't enough time to do what we have to do. So I believe, the one guy that called this morning said, look, Al, nobody wants to run for a part-time job at $288 a week, which is $5.78 an hour. He doesn't want to give up his $150,000 job unless he's a little bit nuts. I shouldn't say that. There's a man in the room today that did that. He's working at one-third his salary and doing an excellent job. But how many people are going to do that for a two-year term, part-time mayor at $288 a week? It's impossible. We can't have a guy that's making $150,000, running a business or a career or a profession, to come in here and sit for two years and then maybe out and get what for it? $15,000. So it's a part-time job and it's paid accordingly. But what we don't want is to look in the Sunday paper on the general employment. If you have, if you have experience in plumbing, heating, electrical, mowing, window cleaning, you have your own truck, a chauffeur's license and your own tools, we'll give you $5.88 an hour. But we're looking in the career column, we run a gun from the career column to come in and fill this general position. You're not going to find a guy that's going to do that. Now, why did we get to this position? People are saying, do you notice in some years what kind of people they give us? In some cases, they're scraping the barrel. This is true, gentlemen. This is what the people are saying. They stick somebody up there because they did even meaning anymore, you're it. And they shove the guy up onto the platform reluctantly. He don't want to be there, but you're the only choice we've got, so he runs. And the people are saying, who wants that guy for four years? Give us something good, we'll give you four years. Now, we have supposedly a two-party system in this city, and we know it's not so. We have one party sometimes scraping the barrel and the other party has no barrel at all. So they're borrowing, they're borrowing politicians from this party to run in this party. And they're telling the guy in the street, we want four years, and he's saying, for what? Give me something. So what I'm saying is that the committees, both parties, Democrat, Republican, sit down, stop fighting amongst yourselves, and last night's election proves what I'm going to say next. Don't pick a candidate and say, this is your choice, both for him or else. The people are saying, don't shove candidates down my throat. I'll do my own candidate choices and I'll do my own voting. And when you hear 3,400 people saying, we don't want your choice, there's something wrong. So sit down as a committee. Stop looking for a man that has the experience, the background, the love of the city or the county, willing to put in his time, sacrifice like many of our mayors have done, and say to the people, look, let's educate you. This is the man we want to put in there for four years. He may take it. And another thing, a referendum. We know that we walk into a booth, most people do it, they don't read a referendum. It's either too long or too short, or they don't understand it. And when the government is asking for something, it always means money, so we go, no, 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 coast to board. So you say to the guy, what did the referendum say? I don't know. And did you believe it? I don't know. Did you understand it? No. Would you vote? No. Why? Because I don't want to give the government anything. So now you're saying to them, we want four years referendum. The guy's going to say, what are they giving me in return? What kind of a mayor am I going to get? Well, we've been lucky. We've had a contractor who was able to run the business and do it properly. We've had insurance men. Applause. Somebody come to the door? Am I talking too long? I haven't mentioned my, my, I haven't chosen any party, so I can't be getting cut off for that reason. What I want you gentlemen to do is when you put down a referendum, explain it to the people, take the time to educate the idiot with the beer can sitting in front of the television. This is the reason you want four years, because you can't do it in two. Now, we're lucky with our present mayor because he has his own finances, he's not living off of his $15,000, and he can do it. He's retired. But how many businessmen, even today, all these mayors you've got here now, how many of those men will give up their businesses to come here and do a full-time job running $11 million business for $2.88 a week? I don't think they're going to get it. I'm for four years, but I have a stipulation. Term limit. You get two four-year terms. If you can't do it in eight years, wait four years and come back. So two limits, consecutive four-year terms, two of them. Now, I've got an escape, and then I'll get off with this. If we get a mayor for four years we don't like, and after a year we want to get rid of him, here's the escape clause. We find a nice, good-looking 21-year-old intern. With a pristine dress.
We'll take her right now.
Send her into your or his office.
Yeah.
Send her into your office and then get you impeached. But knowing Mrs. Stafford, maybe we'll have time to impeach you. She'll impale you on the roof of this building. So I'm for four years. Educate the people to why we need the four years and know that it's a full-time position, but it's only going to be part-time, and at least give the guy away so he's making as much money as his secretary. I'm not going to get into the BA because that's something else, that's a whole new different story. But if the mayor is working full-time, he may not need him. But if he's working part-time.
Your time is up.
Bob, leave the switch on.
I didn't have to switch.
Okay, Jeff. I thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Does anyone else want to follow that act? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
I'll try. I'm not going to, I just, I thought you were going to ask for them from the council.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank all the mayors for being here tonight. It's super great seeing all of you. I want to thank you for everything that you have given the city for all these years. You spent time up here. The rest of your time, you spend in public life on committees and commissions and continuing, continuing to love your city, which is what a mayor does. I can speak from experience of four years being in the Bullard administration, and we have two members of that administration, Kathy LaBode Rice and Catherine Trowbridge. We went full speed ahead and we went with so many things to do. We think the city administrator's position, which the mayor's advisory committee had recommended wholeheartedly, was a very important part in getting the city moving. And we're continuing to do that with the executive assistant. It's basically the same, same position with just different titles. But it's a very valuable position and it continues to be an important part of the administration. Now, when we went into office, we had a lot of things to do. We did a lot of things. You can look around the city and see the things that happened. The Mayor Bullard left. He left this list. 42 items that needed to be done, that he was working on and needed to be continued. Now, Mayor Stafford and, and Assistant John Crook can tell you that they have done some of these. And then in addition to the list, they already have more to put on the list. So I think we need that continuity. It's important. I think that the four-year term will give us what we need to do. I agree, at one point, I thought the city administrator's position should be four years. It should be a continuity so we wouldn't lose that from one administration to the next. But my rethinking would be is that the mayor's position should be the four years, and then the assistant would be continuing to serve with him the amount of years that he's in office. I thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else on the council?
Yeah, I'm for it, let's vote.
I just wanted to say that I really am in favor of it also, that, but in terms of argument, as far as somebody else coming out against it, some of the arguments I've seen in the paper were that they used, I don't, I forget the individual's name, but he used, he compared Fulton with Sacramento, Texas. Or no, was it California? I guess Sacramento, California, I think the city was. Maybe it was San Antonio. Major city with a two-year term mayor. But I don't think that the city of Fulton is ready to pay a mayor what that city is paying that mayor for two-year term. And that's why, I'm afraid right now, that with what you're paying a mayor for, for a two-year term, you may come to a point in this city where you don't have a mayor's candidate. You may not have a mayor. And I don't think the city is prepared to go through that. I think that the city should really look hard at, at the four-year term. Again, if the mayor's not doing what the city wants him, you've got six aldermen up here you can get rid of to counteract anything the mayor does to you. So, you know, if you feel that, that the mayor's going to be a problem for four years, you've got two-year terms sitting up here for your council, and that's how you would correct the situation, is elect, you know, a council that would counteract anything what you, what the city would feel the mayor is doing against them. So I just wanted to say that I am in favor of the four-year term, keeping the alderman's term at two years. I think that's why it failed before is because they attached three-year terms to the alderman, which, that's a little bit too long. You know, I don't think, you know, it's, it's tough even for an alderman to go out and run every two years, but hey, your congressman has to do that, okay? So there shouldn't be a problem with the alderman doing it.
Thank you, Mark.
Mister fellow alderman, Mister Mayor, could you tell me if there's, what the maximum terms are pertaining to being mayor, whether it be a two-year term or a four-year term?
How many terms?
What's, what are the maximum terms?
As of right now, there are none. There are no term limits. We can put in term limits, and I would not be against that, but I wouldn't want to do it on the referendum basis. That can be done after the referendum is passed by council resolution.
Mike, I just make one comment after what Mark said, because it's mine. I think a lot of people have the misconception that the mayor sits there as a totally in control, which is simply not true. The council is the one, the body that runs this city, not the mayor. The mayor has very little power, as a matter of fact. And frankly, that's one of the frustrating things about the job. So that extending his term to four years is not going to create a dynasty or a dictator, if that's what people are afraid of. There's where the power rests, in the council.
It is a council-strong, city government, weak mayor. So, I, maybe a lot of people don't understand that.
Okay. I would also like to thank the former mayors for coming in and further supporting this. It's really appreciated. You, you've all been there. You all know what, what the job is, and I hope people listen to you. I declare the public hearing closed.
Now therefore be resolved that the proposed local law, which would change the term of the mayor from two years to four years, subject to a mandatory referendum, is hereby approved. I'll offer that, you're in. Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item.
For the meeting the council held on September 1st, public hearing was to be held at this meeting on September 16th relative to a proposed local law which would add a new section, Fulton City Code subsection 45-10, entitled Registration by Retail Bicycle Sellers. Mayor Stafford will declare the public hearing over.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Chief Spahn.
Let me be very brief with this. The council rescinded the license, bicycle license fee a couple months ago. That's allowed us to get more licenses out there on, for children in registering their bicycles, which will increase hopefully our recovery rate when bicycles are lost or stolen. I had a request shortly after that. Fee was rescinded to allow local retail sellers to provide those licenses at their store at point of sale. And I believe this would be just another mechanism to get more licenses out there, more records of bicycles and their serial numbers, and again, increase, increase recovery.
Thank you, chief. Sir, you wanted to speak on this?
No, I want to speak on one.
Does anyone else want to speak on the bicycle registration? Anyone on the council? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
And I therefore be resolved that proposed local law adding subsection 45-10 to the Fulton City Code entitled Registration by Retail Bicycle Sellers is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the regular common council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 3rd, 1998, be moved to Wednesday, November 4th, 1998, at 7:00 p.m. due to the November 3rd, 1998, general election.
Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Where the city clerked, where the city of Fulton has been approached by Dowd's House of Flowers regarding a proposal which would allow Dowd's to take a vacant lot, which was taken by the city for back taxes last year, and put it back on the tax rolls, and turns, turn said vacant lot located at 212 West First Street into a parking lot. Whereas the city attorney has reviewed said proposal and recommends that it be referred to the planning commission for their review, to be returned to this council with their recommendation, recommendations for a future council meeting. Be it resolved that said proposal submitted by Dowd's House of Flowers for their property located, for the property located at 212 West First Street is hereby referred to the Fulton Planning Commission for their review and recommendation to be returned to this common council for a future action.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah. Please don't take your... ...property after you read this.
Which one?
This one right here.
Okay.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise to receive sealed bids in his office on or before Tuesday, September 15th, up to 4:00 p.m. Be publicly open at 4:15 on that same day. Relative to an electronic message board in accordance with specifications prepared by Mr. Daniel Vaughn, Chief of Code Enforcement. Whereas the city clerk opened said bids and read them aloud as follows. Graphic Warehouse, Phoenix, New York, seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Howard Rose Art Sign Service, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Whereas the bid of Howard Rose Art Sign Service was faxed to the chief code enforcement officer, therefore not meeting the bidding requirements which asked for sealed bids. Whereas the city clerk advised the city attorney regarding the fax bid, and he was recommended... And he has recommended that the bid did not meet the bidding requirements.
Can I ask a question on this? I received a call today from Howard Rose, and he said that he had spoke to Dan Vaughn regarding this issue, and I guess Dan gave him the green light to fax something in that could be accepted for a sealed bid? Is this correct, Dan?
No, it's not correct. Yeah, he asked me if he could fax a bid in, and I said, yes, he could fax a bid in, but I'm not sure that it would be entertaining because the fact that the deal was not...
John, Mr. Rose also spoke to me and indicated that he had that conversation with Mr. Vaughn, but that he also himself knew that it was probably not a correct procedure, so I don't think he could make that argument. I mean, he knew... He admitted to me that he didn't feel it was a legal bid, the way it was submitted.
Well, the thing that concerns me is, I mean, it's a lower... It's a lower bid quota or whatever.
I understand that.
And, you know, it would be nice, maybe we could toss these out and do it all over again. I mean, we're saving $2,000.
You have a right... My understanding is that $15,000 was budgeted for this item?
Yes.
You have the right to reject bids if they are over and above the amount that was appropriated, and put it out to bid again if you'd like to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to do that.
I would agree with that.
I'd just like this, because I've worked really hard on this. I think that the procedure that to be followed was not followed, I strongly suggest that we do not. I realize it's a lower... A lower figure and everything, but I think it sets a bad precedent, because the procedure is very clearly says that the bid has to be sealed, and I think we're opening up a can of worms if we allow... If we allow it now, we'd have to allow it every time.
No, we're not talking about allowing it. We're talking about, I believe the motion was...
Rebidding.
To not accept the bids and rebid the project.
Right.
And the bid is higher than the amount that's in the budget to pay for this. And since by now, it doesn't look like if we can afford to pay Graphic Design Graphic Warehouse seventeen, three twenty-five, because there's only $15,000 in the budget.
Right, but we have money from... Barry Ostran has money from the user fee account that he's transferring to meet that figure. I just think procedurally, it hasn't... It wasn't followed.
But we agree that it wasn't followed. That's why they want to...
But the thing is, though, if you rebid, what happens when you rebid? I mean, both of these people know what the bids were, and other people don't know also.
Hopefully, they'll get lower bids.
And below $15,000.
Hopefully, somebody can get a lower.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion that we reject the bid and...
I would second that.
And then also direct the city attorney to readvertise... Or city clerk to readvertise.
Okay. I'll let him get this. You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
You second. Okay. On the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion's carried. What date do you want to... Do you want to specify a date, Woman Thompson?
To be open.
With the next regular meeting of the common council first Tuesday of the month?
I'm gonna say the second one in October, the 20th of October.
Okay, that's fine.
It's actually gonna be the 27th, because three of us will be out...
Joe's counting right now. Do you have... What timeframe do you need, Joe?
Can he go by the 27th?
He needs time to advertise it.
27th of October.
So...
27th again. October?
Yeah. Take it twice. First of October?
What? For the... For the first meeting in October?
I'd say it'd be received at the second meeting of October.
See, we would have to...
Because it may not even be a second.
We have to do this one, but I just want to make sure you have the time to do this.
I could get it in the paper by noon tomorrow. I could advertise for the 21st, 28th of September, and the first meetings in October.
Yeah, we can make that easy. It's for the interest of time, because it might be...
We can do it for the first meeting in October.
Okay, we want to...
But also, it just assumes that only these two people are gonna bid again, right? If you're shooting for that...
No, once you open it up, it's open bidding here.
I know, but if you're gonna... That'll be in the paper when?
21st and 22nd.
It'll be in for the 21st and 28th of September.
21st and 28th?
Yeah, I believe those are Mondays, which means that would give us the six. We'd open the bids on the six.
I just want to make sure there's at least a couple of weeks in there.
Yeah, the specs are already done. It's just a matter of readvertising.
And a day after the 21st, so that's fine.
Okay.
Next item.
Was by memo dated August 27th from Raymond Graham, DPW Commissioner's City Clerk. He advised City Clerk of expenditures of city funds, material, labor, equipment for trash removal at 309 South Sixth Street, of $100.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that pursuant to Article 11.1 of the CSEA Service Contract entitled Educational Incentives, that Mr. Cheryl Blake of the City of Fulton Chamberlain's Office be authorized to attend Kiowa Community College for an educational accounting course pursuant to Article 11.1 of the CSEA contract.
I'll move that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign an agreement between the City of Fulton, Blaisland, Block, and Lee for services related to the site investigation of the former Camden Building.
When is this ever gonna end?
This is under the brownfields. Our share of that, I think, is...
Eighty-two?
Twenty?
Twenty-five.
It was twenty-five. It was just...
Eighty-two-five.
Total emergency cost of the project.
But it ended up, what, twenty-one, five?
Well, unfortunately, we're gonna have to kick in more money if we have to take a building down in the process. Total cost for demolition and investigation at this point will be three thirty, oh eight to three, and DEC will be reimbursing for approximately one eighty-six, nine, three one fifty.
So our share is $143,000?
And change.
Well, I understand you took the building down, too. And there was no funding within that investigative grant to allow you to do that, but because of the special circumstance, DEC is going to reimburse the city 50% of the cost of demolition, so we really killed two birds with one stone, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, it wasn't planned. But we need to do this to test that site now under the brownfields before we can even get rid of it.
Is this cost already figured into the ban that was floated the first part of the year? Or is this above and beyond that?
I don't know.
Is the engineering cost here already figured into the cost with the ban that was floated the first of the year? Is this above and beyond that?
I think this is above and beyond. This is the demolition site investigation, so it's up to...
But it is considerably down from the approved investigative cost to start with.
Because we get to do some work for us, free of charge as well, so we really work very hard to get it all the way around.
So our share on this went from eighty-two-five down to twenty-one-nine from the...
Investigative costs.
Investigative costs. So it's gonna be the twenty-one-nine that it's gonna cost us for this investigation.
Well, we gotta do it, don't we?
I believe that we're in that position.
Yeah, we have to do it.
We're gonna reimburse the city since the contract, the funds are released, the mayor has signed the contract, and we say we'll be reimbursing for that demolition cost, amount to one twenty-one, two forty-one fifty, so...
We'll have that coming back in.
You'll have that coming in.
Definitely can use that. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that City Clerk be authorized to advertise to receive sealed bids in his office located in City of Fulton Municipal Building on or before October 1st, up to 3:00 p.m., and to be open thereafter for the purchase of timber from the City of Fulton in accordance with specifications prepared by Forecon Inc.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that City Clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, October 6th, relative to a proposed nuisance abatement ordinance.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public auction to be held on Tuesday, October 6th, at 7:00 p.m. for the sale of the following properties: 200 Hannibal Street, Fulton, New York; 201-203 Onida Street, Fulton, New York. Be further resolved that said advertisement be published in the official city newspaper for three weeks in accordance with Fulton City Code. Be further resolved that a minimum bid of $35,000 is hereby established for both properties with increments of $100 per bid over $35,000. Be further resolved that the common council reserves the right to reject any and all bids and shall not be valid until it is approved by a three-fourths majority of the council, and also by the mayor. Be further resolved that the city makes no representation as to any of the properties offered for sale herein, as to their compliance or non-compliance with any city, county, state, or federal codes, rules, regulations, and/or ordinances. Said responsibilities shall be incumbent upon the bidder to make sure that the property is correctly zoned for his or her particular intended purpose for said property.
I'll have to...
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise to receive sealed bids in his office on or before September 15th, up to 4:00 p.m., and to be publicly open at 4:15 on the same day in the council chambers. Whereas the City Clerk...
Let me ask a question first. About the sealed bids. Because we were last, when I had talked to Ron Ed, we were gonna look at some of the work that the laws that were made in the war, the law of finance, before you announced the bids and what they were. I believe...
Well, what I was just gonna do is announce what the bids came in as, and the council can do whatever they choose at that point. They can either accept the bids, or they can check the work out.
John, you say you want to tell it, too. If you're looking at it.
What I have to do is pay for this until we call it.
Just withdraw it from the agenda?
Sure.
Okay. Just withdraw it at this time?
For the meeting the Fulton Planning Commission held on Monday, September 14th, the Planning Commission recommended that the site plan presented by Mr. Dennis Wheeler for property located at 554 South First Street, formerly known as Lanza's Bakery, be approved with the following stipulations. One, that a handicap parking space be added on the Union Street side. Two, that the common council approve parking in the city right of way. I'll therefore be it resolved that City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on October 6th, 7:00 p.m., relative to the proposed site plan presented by Mr. Dennis Wheeler for the property as described above.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Should this say relative to proposed parking in the right of way? Because we're not gonna approve the site plan, we're just gonna approve parking in the right of way. Dan, didn't the Planning Commission approve the site plan? We have nothing really to say about that. All we're gonna vote on is whether or not he can park in the right of way.
In the city right of way. Yes.
So can we make that change?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Is this the building on Sixth Street?
No, no, no.
On First Street.
Oh, Lanza Bakery down on South First Street.
What is it you want to change, Charlie?
It says that the public hearing will be relative to the proposed site plan. I don't... Unlike when the Planning Commission reviews and approves a site plan, that's not what we're gonna do.
Oh, relative... You want it relative to the approval of parking?
Relative to the proposed parking in the city right of way.
Okay.
Does that make sense, David?
Yes.
Okay.
Relative to the approved parking in the city right of way.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Oh, do you want to... Hold on this, or are we gonna speak on this?
Well, yeah, we'll open for discussion, certainly.
I don't know what to say after this. On July 21st, the council passed a resolution allowing Lee Memorial time to investigate the opportunity to provide a contract for the services related to the DOT drug and alcohol testing for the City of Fulton. The Lee Memorial Hospital has now provided the City of Fulton with a proposal, and at this point, we have to find out what the council wishes to do.
At this time, we have received proposals, and I believe you have received the documentation from both Lee Memorial Hospital and Oswego Hospital to provide this service. I believe tonight, what we need to do is determine which of these hospitals we're going to retain. I will open this subject up for discussion at this time.
Is our city personnel director here? I saw him in the back there. Oh, there, okay.
There he is, Mr. Care.
Yeah. Yeah. There is, like, working or not, I'm sure it was a very anyway. Hard time. Hard time. Your honor. I guess I'm beginning to sound somewhat like a broken record, but I've submitted the documentation, and this is a continuation of our discussion, continuation of the memorandum that I've submitted to the council, and it comes right down to this. I've reviewed, and I've looked at the proposal as submitted by Mr. Casey in Lee Memorial Hospital, and I'm confident that they could probably provide us with that level of service. They could do the DOT mandatory drug alcohol testing, as explained in my memorandum as recently as this afternoon, and I don't know if folks had even a chance to review it. But my further discussions with Oswego Hospital, the occupational division up there, Ms. Brenda Lemay, who's the director, I still have some reservations insofar as what level of service they could provide us locally. There's such a thing as the NIDA or non-NIDA testing and that is somewhat of a puzzle that I see presented by Lee Memorial. The DOT recognized drug testing has a complete protocol with the medical review officer format, policy, procedure, confidentiality and the whole bit. In addition to that, they also screen out or they test just for five particular drugs on that urine analysis. And that comes right down to a cost. And as my memorandum had alluded to, there's a cost differentiation in Memorial of $57 per drug test compared to Oswego Hospital forty to fifty. And that's a negative testing as well. Because if a test, if an employee tests positive, then it runs sort of a higher math of retest, split sampling and the like. And in addition to that, there's the client base and the population of the aggregate pool of how many people are going to be included. I believe if we go with Lee Memorial Hospital, we've got just thirty-eight employees that we have here overall that are CDL required to be part of that program. Now based on the DOT mandate, fifty percent of which have to be tested on annual basis, which amounts to an aggregate of nineteen of these employees have to be tested. So there's a guaranteed cost of $1,083 if I remember correctly at the top of my head. It would be less than that with Oswego Hospital based on the probability that our thirty-eight employees would be thrown into an aggregate pool of three hundred. So the sheer numbers alone pretty much speak for themselves.
If you threw them in with the bigger numbers, there'd be less of our employees would get tested.
I mean, our thirty-eight employees would become part of that consortium with Oswego Hospital.
I kind of feel safer if more and more testing.
Well, Ed, to be honest with you, statistically, if you're going into a pool of three hundred, you're going to add our thirty-eight. Instead of picking a hundred and fifty, the county would then test a hundred and sixty-nine, right? Fifty percent?
The numbers work out.
So in theory, all thirty-eight of the City of Fulton's employees could be tested.
Or zero.
Or zero. But again, statistically speaking, there should be no difference in any average year, roughly nineteen employees of the City of Fulton will be tested.
It could theoretically work out that way. Statistically, it probably does. I'm not a mathematician. I'm not a statistician. So I, as far as the numbers...
I mean, this spot that anybody can juggle the numbers when you're talking about statistics, so.
Figure it out.
I don't think...
I understand, Charlie. I think whichever...
Apples to oranges.
Whichever entity you folks want to choose, it's entirely up to you. I've put all that information out there. Lee Memorial has been kind enough to submit that documentation. They apparently have a Windows computer-generated bottom program, whatever that may be. I believe that they could do that. All that I want to do is come back to this council and tell you, take a look at the cost, take a look at the figure. If it's within your power, I guess if you want to go with Lee Memorial Hospital, then you post that determination.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
So what you're saying is the Oswego Hospital would charge forty-two dollars as opposed to fifty-seven, but Lee Memorial Hospital wouldn't?
Forty-two, forty-two fifty, right.
Forty-two fifty to fifty-seven.
Forty, right. Forty-two fifty compared to fifty-seven.
Mr. Casey?
Yes, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the common council for your willingness to allow Lee Memorial Hospital to further research the drug and alcohol testing and to present our proposals to you. We have done that. As Mr. Garo has indicated, we do have a Windows-based program. We, our computer software comes from the largest occupational health program that's in the country. It's called Occupational Health Manager. It is 2000 compliant. It is window-based. It's user-friendly. We can do the drug and alcohol testing. Yes, the city employees would be from the CDL in their own pool. Yes, they would be tested on the frequency that is required. It may or may not be more than the frequency that would actually happen if they were in a larger pool depending on how many were selected and so on. Our costs are what we have submitted. I don't know what the Oswego cost is for the positive tests as that is a possibility. We believe that we can do the job, that we can do the job well. I'm confident that we can do it well and we would certainly appreciate the support of the city. Like some of the common council members have suggested here, I would think that you would want your employees tested and that you would want to feel comfortable that in fact there is a mechanism in place so that the minimum requirements are in fact met. I would be prepared to answer questions. My assistant administrator is also here to answer questions or, and our person who works with the occupational medicine department, Brenda Walpole, is also here.
Mr. Casey, if you were to get this, would you have other people joining the pool? Would you go out and try to recruit other?
We certainly could. We would, if in fact we did that, we would, you know, certainly work with the city at their discretion as to whether they wanted people included in, other people included in the pool or not.
Does anyone on the council have any questions?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Casey. How many agencies do you do this drug testing for right now?
I would have to defer to one of the staff members.
Um, Fulton, about twenty, twenty-five companies right now. Whereas where the medical review officer are then, but they're not in our pool. They may have their own. So, and they send them to us.
Twenty, 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 twenty-five?
Yeah.
What about some large corporations? I mean, do you do drug testing for Nestle's or Seal Right, Black Lawson, Bird's Eye? Do you do any of the testing there?
Yes.
Christ Steel?
Um, not yet.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Just, we have one minute.
What time can you, you?
Miss Kenyon.
Mayor, how does this work? Does anybody know when they do a drug testing, do they take them off the job and take them to the hospital or what? Do they actually know how?
How have we been doing that, Mr. Garo?
We've been doing it since January 96th. And when I'm notified that there is a random drug alcohol, they'll let me know if this drug, if it's alcohol.
No, I mean the testing.
And we take this, we take the individual and we have them submit right to the test site. We bring them over to the test site and they have to submit to it.
So they...
Is confidential?
No, but I mean if you're going to take an employee down to Oswego Hospital...
We won't do that. We can do onsite testing.
Okay.
They've made it available. They'll do the testing onsite.
Bring it there then.
You have the test site come to us.
As a comment, I think that's again up to the city. You'd want to, if you do that, be sure that you have the proper security so that in fact there is proper security for securing the samples for the drug testing. We do have such facilities that we have built into the facility of Lee Memorial Hospital when we constructed the occupational medicine department.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone like to propose a motion for either Lee Memorial or Oswego Hospital?
I make a motion that we give Lee Memorial a shot.
I second it.
Second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose it.
Motion's carried.
I would like to comment though, as to my reasons for opposing it. I worked for the county of Oswego. I've worked there for sixteen years and Oswego Hospital has done the drug testing for Oswego County since the county went through a drug testing program. They do an excellent job. The county's very happy with them and the other businesses that do testing through them are very happy with them. Also, I'm not opposed to businesses in the City of Fulton as it was mentioned after our last meeting regarding this issue. I'm very positive as far as businesses getting work from the city. But in this case, I believe that Oswego Hospital will do a much better job and the cost is much better, it's a better bank for our buck. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment of why I voted for it. I appreciate once again the work that Mr. Garo has done on this. He's really given us an awful lot of information. And of course, he mentions the fact, the difference in the price as far as what we're getting. Sometimes we have to look at other things besides the bottom line. Sometimes we have to be concerned with whether this is a good thing for our community and a good thing for our hospital. I think it is. I think what we've asked, the council's asked Lee Memorial to do is to pick up their level of service and I think they're going to do it. I think they're going to continue to do it. So I think that they certainly deserve to have that opportunity.
This is an annual contract that's renewed annually? So if things didn't work out, we have a chance next year to address this again?
Yeah, that's correct. I just wanted to make one, maybe one last comment.
I want to thank the common council for their consideration and I also want to thank Oswego Hospital for their diligence in submitting their proposal to us. And I thank Lee Memorial Hospital as well for their diligence and I want to go on record and I, again, appreciate all the work that you folks have done. And I'm looking forward to working with Dennis Casey, CEO of the hospital and his occupational med group and continuing in the good work and service that they've provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Is there any business brought before the council from the audience?
I think Mr. Hitchcock is here and he'd like to talk about water.
Sure.
Four weeks ago, I asked about that sewer line that was supposed to be placed near Patrick Circle and I was told that it would be soon. Well, since then, as you know, Mayor, you were over there and you saw the problem. What I need to know is how soon? This is the middle of September and I'm very concerned that it's not going to happen.
Your area is closer than any other area in the city to having new lines put in. I can tell you that. John Crook, today we went over with both water and sanitation and DPW and made up a schedule of the different jobs. And John, could you give us the information on that, please?
I have another question when we finish. Thank you. First of all, one of the reasons that the water and sanitation crew has not been over there yet is we got behind by about a month on a lot of projects. The big flood caused that crew, which would normally go over there, to be pumping out cellars and working on catch basins that we found as a result of the flood needed some immediate attention. And secondly, some of the things in the downtown area, that's the same crew that have been putting, I believe about twelve catch basins in downtown. And some of the problems that they ran into, they found in many instances because of a lot of the infrastructure underneath the downtown area, it took them a lot longer to get that, those projects done. So, but we're pretty much done with all that now and we're looking at tomorrow having a crew over on McCollum Drive to make the first soft cut in the road. And then next Monday, barring any other floods, that crew's going to be over there with a track machine and start digging the trench and putting that pipe, that thirty-inch pipe in the ground. So that's the schedule right now.
I want to thank you, Mr. Veen, so patient and I think Mr. Hitchcock has something to read which indicates somehow sometimes government works slowly.
This is referenced to stagnant water and it was written to Mr. Myrono by Mr. Boynton. I have spoken to Mayor Patrick concerning your situation of stagnant water laying on the rear of the property. He has informed me that it is his intention to put a pipe across that area sometime this summer. In the meantime, the city sanitation department will attempt to keep the water from building up in this area. If you have, if this isn't done, please feel free to call. This is dated 1975. I thought this might be amusing.
Well, you're a lot closer now than you were then.
Yeah, as far as you know. The pipe is there, it just is not in the ground yet, that's all.
It's above ground.
That is definitely going to be a major project and they are going to get started on it. As I said, they're going to make the road cut tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes. Is there anyone else?
Yeah. Same as I said, over on Wells Street, is anything being done about getting that water out of that ditch over there? We've got thirty-six inch pipes coming in, eight inch going out.
That is, that's one of the ones that's on your list. A meeting ago, I think it was, was it? Yeah. A meeting ago, I asked all the aldermen to put a list together of the problem areas within their individual wards. Once we have all those together, then we're going to have to go out for a request for proposal from an engineering firm to come in here and try to determine how we can take care of this and what the cost is going to be. Because this is not going to be something that can be budgeted. This is going to be a long-term expenditure. We're going to have to bond for it because it's going to be very, very expensive. And past administrations have not wanted to get involved in this because of the expense. But we got to do it.
I understand what you're talking, the city as a whole, but you've got all this water coming in, there's eight inch pipe going across the road into another thirty-six inch pipe. That's it.
Well, we found out that there's a...
Section across the street, that's it.
Culvert across, or under Harrison Street, that right in the middle of it, it's a thirty-six inch culvert and in the middle of it, there's some gas lines or something running right through it, which makes no sense at all because all the branches come down and build up inside that and then it floods behind it. It's like a beaver dam inside there. And we had that this, this last big rain we had, it backed right up almost, almost a block. We had telephone poles floating down there. I mean, there's a lot of problems with the way this system was designed. And now to go and, can we fix them all immediately? No, we can't. When we get this list, we're going to have to prioritize them and do them the best we can. And I know that you have a problem down there and we're going to get to you as quickly as we can.
Years ago in my neighborhood on Lion Street, there was a pit that ran by several houses, at least several houses. Was that, was the source an artesian well and was the artesian well caved?
I have no idea. I'll have to check with the water department tomorrow, but I have no idea. Yes, ma'am.
When they do this thing with the sewer lines, is Mr. Crook supposed to be overseeing or what? We had a little, Mr. Cardinelli wanted to have, had to have a new sewer line put to his house on South Seven Street. They dug the road up, three-quarters of the road, put the sewer to his house because it was backing up. They lacked the hole with just some crushed stone in it, no barrier over it, just this, you know, kind of a, big as this. We had the big rainstorm, truck almost fell through it. One of the big, we have a tractor trailer truck that comes through half a dozen times a night, jockeying trailers and nestles and he almost fell through it. So they called the city right of way because they came and they put a blockade over it. Now there's a blue line right next to that thing. The next day they came, or two days later, because I called Mr. Sherman about it because I said, if this caves in, we can't get out. We're dead end, there's nothing to get out of that area. So he came over and checked it out. They came in, instead of just putting a temporary thing because there's a blue line, they're going to come through and put a water line. They beautifully paved that little hole, rolled it the whole bit, came back the next day, cut it all up next to it, tore the road all across to put the water line through. Then they had to come back and then that, that was another big mess for another week because he said if anything happens, we're having trouble, you know, they're doing the water thing downtown. Why do they do two jobs for the sake of one? They, all they had to do was put a guard over that thing until they put the water line in. That's expense for nothing.
And what address did this happen at?
Seven, Seventh Street.
Right across from...
Across from Warehouse.
Okay. John will check on that tomorrow? That doesn't sound reasonable.
I can't, there'd be no reasonable, I can't see...
Was it the city doing the, I'm not even sure if it was the, was it the city doing the work or was a private contractor doing the work?
Well, somebody was down there talking with Mr. Cardinelli because it was a sewer problem. He's not going to do his own sewer problem if the city's got to cut the road up as they...
No, no, if the sewer is from the main to the house, it is the homeowner's responsibility. The city doesn't do that.
He would have to get a road cut permit. If he had a problem with a sewer line from his house to the main sewer line, the homeowner would have to get a road cut permit and have a private contractor do that work. So I'm not even sure if the city was even doing that work.
That would have been a plumber would hire, somebody with an excavating equipment to do this.
That hole with the, what do you call those things?
A steel plate would, would work, right.
Well, they didn't put any, they didn't even have a sawhorse.
They just filled it and then it washed out.
Just a little teeny bit of gravel and left it in there and then it really sunk in.
Certainly.
Nothing was put over it to keep the cars from going, it's a dark street.
Yes, it is.
Bitty, nothing street.
We will, and then see if there was a city project, but it sounds like it wasn't at that point.
They called the cops, the cops want to know who took, cut the road up by Zestno, he's up there. I said, no, he's up there, ask him. But they didn't cover it and, but then the city did, the city came and targeted, I think. Didn't they come and, they came and plugged it up with all this tar-
Well, I don't know. Well, I think maybe if the contractor dug it, the contractor fixed it.
Was it city trucks? I don't know because I was gone, I was gone away when I came back, was done, I told that's good, but the city came back and it's staying.
But we'll, we'll check on, we'll check on that one.
I forgot to mention my, I got a offensive water problem on my corner, my fire hydrant. I called and they came over and dug it up and repaired it. It's leaking again. They came back over, they shut it off. They're telling me they have no fire hydrants, that it's gonna take three to four weeks to order a new one. So there's just a lot of water problems on that corner.
Yes, there is. Yes.
I talked to, excuse me, I talked to Andy Hogan this afternoon of the water department and he said they had gone over there, they looked at the fire hydrant to replace the insides. It was still leaking, they think that possibly it's one of the lines going to the fire hydrant that's leaking. But they may have to, if they're gonna dig it up, they wanna make sure that they have a fire hydrant there to put in if they have to. So that's the reason for it. I said normally don't, don't we have fire hydrants on, on hand? And he said yes, but they went through a lot of them, I guess, in a short time and just an oversight, they didn't order any. And they, oh, they've got five on order now, so.
Okay.
The two or three weeks is now down to like a week and a half.
Nobody stocks anything anymore?
No.
They wait until the order comes in before they manufacture? Yes, sir.
First, it's a good thing we don't have too many residents like Mr. Hitchcock, he complains every twenty-three years. Secondly, when you have a sewer ladder replaced from ours to main, responsibility of the homeowner. They get an estimate from the contractor, plumber, price for the sewer replacement, digging, and the replacing of the road. And it's right on the bill, it's included. And it's the contractor who's responsible for the repair. In defense of Mr. Crook, you have a plumbing inspector you can call, you have a ward, all of them you can call, and you have the contractor yourself you can call. I don't think our VA has all the time to go and check every single sewer replacement.
Unfortunately, what usually happens, what I've experienced in my career with the police department, is the only time that something goes wrong with these cuts is in the middle of the night and nobody knows who's responsible.
The owners of the office have answered.
Yeah, they don't respond in the middle of the night. Is there any other business be brought for the council?
I'd like to add something. Talked with city attorney about this beforehand and in one of the things that was added today, I came across the recommendations from the planning commission for Monday night. As you all know, there's a proposed addition to the zoning ordinance regarding parking in the right of way. The planning commission looked at it Monday night. They've made recommendation, a couple of recommendations, a couple recommended changes to what they had. I think that we're gonna have a legislative meeting between now and the next regular council meeting, so I'd like to ask, if it's okay with you, David, ask that Joe Tietro advertise for a public hearing regarding that proposed ordinance for the first meeting in October, which would be the sixth.
I, I think that it's quite possible that having it then, it will be considerably rough draft still. And there's that one big issue I just mentioned to you about the appeal process. I think we as legislative committee, I mean, we may be able to resolve it that night and we may be able to present something that's crisp and clean to the, before the public hearing, you know? But I think it should be known, we may be, the public hearing may not be a final draft that we're presenting.
Okay. I'll hold off then.
But then again, when we're in this situation where we're trying to vote something like this, public hearing is the best place to get input too, so we think it's not bad.
Well, if we have the public hearing, we don't have to-
We don't have to pass it that night.
Right, immediately vote on it. So we could have the public hearing and get some input there.
We could always pass it the second meeting, right?
We do that?
Yeah, you can always.
Sure.
And let's get it going.
Okay. Got it.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that you advertise for a public hearing relative to, an addition to the zoning ordinance entitled, it would be addition section one seventy-seven dot fifty-four entitled right-of-way usage. Public hearing to be held on October sixth.
You make your motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Is there any other business?
You have a matter?
Okay, John.
Okay. I'd like to ask the ordinance committee tonight where we stand on the placement of cellular telecommunication equipment and how are they coming along with the ordinance and where we stand on it.
Really, it's, it's still on the agenda. We have not really laid our hands down. We've, we've been collecting information on it from different municipalities. I believe-
We've received several in the mail. In fact, I gave you copies of a couple of them.
Right.
And I have a skeleton for it.
We have a skeleton one that we are working on.
Then we seem to like that I'm trying to adapt and add and put the city in.
It's not brand new in committee. It's, we've looked at it and we have addressed it every time we've met and it is-
And so is environmental.
Considerably through the process.
When's your moratorium up?
Well, as much, in fact, that's what I was just gonna bring up around it, as much as we're still kind of prodding along with this issue, I'd like to extend the moratorium for another hundred and twenty days. I'd like to offer that a resolution, please.
I'll second that, John.
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I think a hundred and twenty days is kind of long because I also think that by the time, if somebody comes into town to place a tower or antenna, by the time they go to the planning commission for site plan review and all that, I think that because we are far enough along in the process and the legislative committee, I think by the time the planning commission makes a recommendation, we'll be ready to go, so.
Well, we can lift it at that time.
I think too, hasn't the FCC said there has to be a reasonable length of time on a moratorium also?
But I don't know if they put a number on there.
Yeah, but the idea that we had behind that moratorium the night that those people were here was in a good faith effort to try to come up with some legislation so we didn't stick these things by schools or where they were unattractive nuisance or whatever. And I don't think we should let that moratorium run out because I know, I talked to a contractor yesterday, that's been offered to build a tower right up next to ours and I think it would be an in-your-face to those people if we let that happen.
No, we don't want that to happen.
But even if they did that, they'd still have to come to the-
The environmental committee has made a recommendation.
If they did that, then we might better have put it on the water tower and got the seventy-five-hundred bucks ourself. I think that would be a slap right in the face to the public if we did that and it's run. So if we don't have the legislation right now, let's take an estimate on what you think it's gonna take to have it with the public hearings to pass it and then we should extend that moratorium.
You're likely to see that tower up there no matter what you do.
Wow.
You extend a moratorium, okay, say you extend a moratorium for a hundred and twenty days, we go through, pass our legislation, the moratorium then comes off and then we deny them to put the tower or the antennas on the water tower, they have every right to go right next door to that property and stick one up there.
Not a-
As they're in compliance with the regulations that they're required.
Yeah, because we have no regulations now.
One at a time, please.
But they're working on it. The environmental committee has made a recommendation that no cellular sites be on city property. That was their, their one recommendation. The second recommendation was that the legislative committee look at the restrictions and regulations that they would want to place on placement in the other areas of the community and what we could or couldn't add to.
And we have preliminary picked a model to start with and it is a considerable distance through the process.
So the moratorium-
Within another hundred and twenty days or-
When is the moratorium up?
Uh, Tuesday or Wednesday of this week.
Okay, we gotta extend it then. But I don't know about, what's your recommendation, Harley? You know where you're going with this, how many?
I still think if you look at the timeframes that are involved, even if-
Can we do sixty days?
If somebody called Larry Riley tomorrow and said, start building, by the time they jump through the regular hoops, even the hoops that we don't have, by the time they're ready to go, we're gonna have regulations in place. Because it doesn't happen overnight. It just doesn't. Look at some of the things that have come to the planning commission that, that we've talked about. They just don't happen in, you know, seven days or less.
What, what we need to do?
Zero.
I'll go through, to you, what do you think is a, how about ninety days?
Frankly, I think it's a moot argument because it can be rescinded at any time, moratorium. I would suspect optimistically will be first or second meeting in November that we can have a public hearing and maybe begun and maybe move this thing.
About ninety days.
So I, you know, I, I think that, but I also agree with Harley that anybody coming in right now isn't gonna, it's gonna take them a few months to get approval for site plan, permit, billing permits or whatever they need from codes, so I think it's a very moot argument either way. I don't think-
Well, then it wouldn't hurt anything to extend it at least ninety days.
I agree with you, Your Honor.
Well, I, I just don't want to go, extend it too far so we're in excess of what the government thinks, so we don't run into problems that way. That's, that's the only thing I'm looking at there.
Well, I, I understand, Your Honor. I just, I'm trying to protect the-
It said, can't be unreasonable, but it-
Right, it hasn't put a number on it.
But, you know, what do we do? We did ninety days first, then we-
Started sixty. Let's go to ninety.
So if we did a hundred and eighty total, I think that's quite a bit. So if we just add it, I think ninety is-
Ninety?
Ninety days?
Rephrase it, John.
Would you be willing to?
I'll shoot for that right now.
Change that from, change your resolution, amend your resolution?
Right. And if we have to change it again?
Do we still have a second?
Bring it up again.
Yeah, I'll second that, yeah.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, Mayor, one, one thing I have. I've had a constituent and I want to thank you-
On this, we gotta, on this issue before we vote. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion's carried.
Okay.
No, Mr. Haski.
All right. First of all, I want to thank you and I want to thank John Crook. I had a constituent after that heavy rainfall that had a tremendous erosion problem and lost a good chunk of his backyard on the riverside. With your help and John's help, I contacted the county emergency management on this, conservation services, emergency watershed protection service, the Army Corps of Engineer and the canal system office. Hard to get help. There's no money out there supposedly what I was told. People just cannot wait around. They have to have things that have to be done immediately. I would like to see this council send a resolution to the powers to be in the state asking for